...meeting of September the 19th, 2017, Macon Bibb County Commission. As I say, each and every one of you are more than welcome here and we're delighted that you are here. We have a couple of very exciting announcements to make and items of appreciation, but as we always do, we start our agenda with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. We have a couple of our GCAP students that are going to lead us and Apostle Jeffrey Jackson. Is Apostle Jeffrey Jackson here? Apostle Jeffrey Jackson, I don't see anybody responding to that, so Rabbi Schlesinger will lead us in an invocation. And Rabbi Schlesinger leads us in the invocation and then our two GCAP students will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Our God and Creator, we gratefully acknowledge that you are the Lord our God, God of all people, the God of all the generations, so we thank you, we sing your praises for our lives who are in your hands, for our souls which are ever in your keeping, for the signs of your presence we encounter each and every day, for all of those whom we honor here this evening, for their devotion to our county and community, and for all of your gifts at all times, morning, noon, and night. We pray that peace and goodwill will attain among all the inhabitants of our county, our state, our land, and that belief in you will continue to spread its many blessings upon us, exalting us all in righteousness. Amen.
Amen.
May please recite the pledge of allegiance with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. Our pledge of allegiance tonight was led by two of our GCAP students. GCAP stands for Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students, and this is a program that the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia originally started, and we are proud to have Charles Coney here that kind of leads the program for us. There are approximately this year thirty students that have been selected from every high school in the county, and they come together and learn a little bit more about government, local government, how it operates, and I'm sure they'll have a good year this year. Tonight, the two students that led us in the pledge of allegiance, Henry Middlebrooks, would you please stand? Henry is a senior at First Presbyterian Day School where he's on the honor roll and is a member of the National Honor Society. Henry was voted captain of the soccer team as a junior and has been involved in the school's basketball team. He's senior class president and an intern for the local youth where he tutors middle school kids. And Henry believes, quote, "Civic duty is extremely important as it helps us not take our freedoms for granted. Being an American citizen is a privilege," unquote. Henry, thank you very much for being here. Also, also leading us in the pledge of allegiance was Stephen Summerow. Stephen Summerow is a senior at First Presbyterian Day School where he is active in the National Society of High School Honors and the Spanish National Honor Society. He is a GCAP alumni having been part of the 2016-2017 cohort. Stephen tutors math to fifth graders and believes, quote, "Civic education is important in today's youth because they are the leaders of tomorrow. Youth need to learn about civics so that they are able to effectively lead in their community. You cannot be a productive citizen if you do not fully understand that the common good is the concern of all citizens," unquote. Stephen, thank you very much for being here, and congratulations to you. In this, in this day and age when we hear so many negative comments about our youth and how they're going to, you know, rack and ruin and so on and so forth, it's great to see strong contenders and wonderful young men and women coming along. We have several other GCAP students that are here with us. Will y'all please stand just so that we can recognize all of you? GCAP, GCAP students. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate, appreciate you being here. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes, and the minutes of our pre-commissioned meeting of September the 5th and our regular commission meeting of September the 5th have been distributed. Going to get a motion by Schlesinger to approve is seconded by Bechtel. Further discussion here, none, all in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Next, we have several invited guests with us tonight, but let me come down to the podium there and invite Joey Stuckey as well as his mom and dad to come join me at the podium. I am absolutely delighted today to have the privilege of presenting this proclamation. It reads as follows: Whereas Joey Stuckey is Macon's official music ambassador as named by the mayor and city council in 2006, and whereas Joey Stuckey is a session musician, recording engineer, producer, inspirational speaker, educator, and media personality who owns Shadow Sound Studio in historic downtown Macon-Bibb, which contributes to the vibrant music scene in our community. And whereas Joey Stuckey has hosted and produced radio programs and TV programs and prints columns promoting our thriving and diverse music scene and has performed in many places in our community as a solo artist as well as the leader of the Joey Stuckey Band. And whereas Joey Stuckey created and produced the Macon Music CD, Volumes 1 and 2, in partnership with Newtown Macon, providing free recording services and a performance to highlight our vast pool of talented local musicians. And whereas Joey Stuckey is a brain tumor survivor and a blind person who has made these contributions and others to our music scene despite these challenges, encouraging others to overcome and do the same. And whereas Joey Stuckey celebrates the day his brain tumor was removed every September the 29th, gathering friends and family to enjoy music, food, and fellowship to celebrate life together. And whereas in 2017, Joey Stuckey is holding the first ever Alive Day Celebration, free of charge, for everybody in the community to come together and enjoy live performances of many genres of music. Now therefore, our Robert A. B. Record do hereby proclaim September the 29th, 2017 as Joey Stuckey's Alive Day in Macon-Bibb County, and I encourage all citizens to join Joey in celebrating the joy of being alive by gathering together in a show of jubilation for our humanity and to thank him for his many contributions to our thriving and diverse music scene and witness whereof. I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the consolidated government to be affixed this 29th day of September. I cheated a little bit in advance, dated it. This isn't actually yet the 29th, but I wanted it to read that way for this, and I've signed that. And Joey, congratulations to you. We are delighted that you are alive.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And, and one last thing, Joey was kind enough to give me a copy of his latest CD on September the 29th. Get his album, he's doing great things. Joey, thank you again for being here tonight, congratulations to you. called "A Six-String Soldier" by Joey Stuckey, so look for it, it's good, good music. In case you haven't noticed, this is almost standing room only tonight, which is a little
It's emergency, I need your car.
bit unusual for us, but the room is packed and with very good reason, something I know
What?
I need your car.
this entire community can get behind and already has, and that is to say thank you.
For what?
It doesn't matter.
Oh my God.
Jesus. Women drivers.
... Thank you to the team of hundreds of people that has been training for months to protect us before, during, and after severe weather. Tonight, we have with us representatives of the departments, organizations, agencies, partners, and volunteers that were part of the response effort to be publicly recognized by our government and community for what they have done for us. This is a team that selflessly and without question or pause answered the call of the first full week of September to begin making preparations for the impact of Hurricane Irma. At first, it was a sheltering operation similar to last year's response for Hurricane Matthew, and then as the storm tracked west, they added a response and recovery operation on top of that. Did they complain? Did they pause? No. They ramped up efforts, called in more resources, and prepared to protect us and help us to recover. These hundreds of people rode out the storms, not with their families, but with their friends and colleagues. They staffed shelters, prepared meals, cleared roads, restored power, and so much more, all the while their families rode out the storms in homes or with friends. Response to a storm of this size is more than just while the storm passes overhead, it's days and nights of preparation and communication ahead of the storm, and believe me, it'll be weeks of cleanup after the storm. But these crews have worked tirelessly to get this community up and running in just a few short days, and the effort was nothing short of astounding and awe-inspiring. With the extent and breadth of the damage across this entire county, we will be weeks cleaning up the debris, but we can add thanks to our prayers that this was not a major, there was not a major injury or loss of life related to Irma. And that's because of the preparation of this team, the willingness of the public to heed our warnings and be prepared, and of course, the grace of the good Lord. With that, I'd like to call our emergency manager, management director Spencer Hawkins forward to talk about what this team accomplished. Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, commissioners. As the mayor said, we went through a lot over the last, last two weeks. I've got some information, a little story if you will, about Irma and what we went through and highlighting some of the behind the scenes that may not be recognizable or seen with what happened and what we went through. So Irma will be a name in a storm that will not be soon forgotten in, in Macon-Bibb County. Not since the flood of 1994 has there been an event that impacted everyone in our community. For years, everyone, including me, will be talking about Irma by the numbers. Thousands from Florida and coastal Georgia seeking shelter, over 55,000 without power, over 200 roads closed, tens of thousands of cubic yards of debris, and thousands of personnel hours spent putting this county back together. What I want to do is spend a few minutes talking and telling the story of Irma and the individuals that represent the hundreds of people behind the scenes that made this incredible response and recovery happen. As we watched Irma gaining strength, growing from a tropical storm to a major hurricane and setting her sights on the east coast of the United States, we knew one thing, people will come. Working with the American Red Cross, shelter operations began, readying ourselves to receive these evacuees from the coastlines. From our experiences during Hurricane Matthew, we knew this was going to be a significant undertaking, and I was concerned until I heard that two amazing Red Cross volunteers were going to be with us, Jerry Newton and Terry Totten, were going to work in our shelters and in our emergency operations center. Without their tireless efforts, and our shelter operations would not have been as successful. This success has made even a bigger difference once we saw that Irma had tracked further west and was now turning north and heading right for Macon-Bibb County. Now we had a second operation to plan for, a direct impact of a major hurricane, and we started pre-staging our teams from Public Works, Parks and Beautification, and Solid Waste to prepare for the massive debris field that we were anticipating, as well as facilities management and IT for the impacts to our building and infrastructure. This also increased the personnel and utilization of our emergency operations center. We needed more staff to help manage this ever-expanding operation. Enter Kerry Hatcher with the Georgia State Defense Force. He marshaled the resource request through the state approval process, and we were able to get 51 Defense Force personnel with us here in Macon-Bibb County at the emergency operations center, at the shelter setting them up, moving equipment in the field. Kerry himself spent days in the emergency operations center directly supporting the EMA staff. So Monday morning, September 11th, Irma arrives. In the last 12 hours, she had left a trail of destruction from the Florida Keys to the Panhandle. There was not one part of Florida that had not been impacted, and now it was our turn. We were ready. Months of coordination meetings turned into days of hazard planning, which turned into hours of final preparation for Irma's arrival. Then we had to watch helplessly as the storm passed over us, just waiting to start our rescue and response operations. During the storm, we received a call that an enormous tree had fallen and was blocking all of 75 northbound, trapping those still trying to flee Irma's wrath. Enter a group of Bibb sheriff deputies, which Garrison Page was one of those deputies, armed with their personal chainsaws, sliced the offending tree into pieces, cleared the road, and allowed those evacuees to continue north out of harm's way. However, throughout the storm, Irma did bring us a bit of a surprise. The severity of Irma's winds caused power fluctuations in the emergency operations center for several minutes, bringing down our computer and phone systems. But because of Matt Parker from Macon-Bibb IT was on site, he was able to spring into action, restoring our systems in a matter of minutes, allowing us to get back on track for our Irma response. About 7:00 PM Monday night, Irma's wave of destruction had finally left our area, and we were ready. Remember those Public Works crews that staged hours before the storm arrived? They threw open their garage doors and raced to our hardest-hit areas. Operators like Marion Redding worked throughout the night using heavy equipment like a surgeon uses a scalpel, clearing massive trees from roads, while still calling in new impact areas to the emergency operations center so we could coordinate our crews as effectively as possible. As the sun rose Tuesday morning over Macon-Bibb, we took stock in what had happened and what we had all just went through, knowing that we would still have weeks of cleanup ahead of us and months, if not years, that we would be dealing with the aftermath of Irma. A few things stood out. We lost no one, and there were no major injuries because of the storm. Planning works. All of the meetings, emails, business cards exchanged, and conversations over lunches panned out, and we were successful. Most important is that our Macon-Bibb community, government, private, nonprofit, and citizen came together to work together for the benefit, safety, and well-being of the community. And that's something that the numbers can't tell you, and that's something that we can all be proud of. Thank you for all of your hard work and support.
Spencer, I wonder if we could invite those members of Public Safety and Public Works, E-911 Center, and others that participated to come down front so that we can kind of see you. I know this isn't all of them by any means, but this is just some representatives from the different departments. Everything from, from Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, to E-911.
All, all my team.
The Georgia Defense Fund.
We got all of my email.
And the school system, they were here watching, wondering when they were going to be able to open up schools up, and Dave Gowan was here trying to coordinate with it. And this is just, this is just a small sampling of the people that stood up when Hurricane Irma came through, and they deserve, they deserve a lot of credit and recognition. These are some of the nameless heroes in our community. So Spencer, thank you, and thank all of the members of the team and partner agencies for what you did. We know that the job is not done yet. We ask for the public's patience as we continue to clean up the aftermath of the storm. United Way is now holding with the unmet needs, or is helping with unmet needs and linking services to people, but tonight, we thank each of you in this room and those you are representing for your selfless dedication to the people and animals of Macon-Bibb County. Who, who here was in, was out there at Eisenhower Parkway at the farmer's market with the animal shelter? They had, they, they had something like 50, 50 some odd animals that people brought with them that couldn't go into the shelter, so thank you very much. And Janice Ross asked if she could say a word or two. Janice?
So the mayor and Spencer are right, we didn't lose anybody, so we were fortunate, but we did lose something, and we lost a tree in front of City Hall. Many of you may know that tree's been there since 1950, and it has endured being run over, hit by lightning, and survived everything until we had Hurricane Irma. So first, I want to introduce David Lanier, who is standing in the back. David is the owner of Bald Eagle Woodworker, and so when I heard them cutting the tree up, I said, "We can't just let it disappear." And so we would like to present the commissioners with a gift tonight. Go that way.
Wow.
Wait a minute, I'll tell you where he is.
Great.
Mayor, do we recognize Ron Shipman?
Yeah.
He's the Vice President of Georgia Power.
Absolutely.
And Teresa.
Mm-hmm.
Can't think of her last name right now, she's at Georgia Power.
That's a fact.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you will open your packages, you will see the barrel of the pin is made from the trunk of the tree that's out front.
Yeah, very cool.
Wow. Thank you very much, that's most impressive, and I, and I will certainly honor, honor this. I understand that others really need time at the podium. Ron Shipman is here from Georgia Power Company, and Teresa Robinson is here, but Ron, do you want to say anything? Because I tell you, what y'all continue to do for us is absolutely incredible. You want to say, just a minute?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just want to simply say that to, we got a couple of linemen here, and just want to recognize them, but really, if they would just stand up. Troy Lewis. Troy and Andy. And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd just like to say, you were exactly right. These are team members who did leave their families at home and who did ride the storm out, and for several of you, you don't know, is that they actually slept in the headquarters. So they didn't go home till after service was restored. So I just want to say thank you for all of Bibb County, thank you for everybody that worked with us, and we were just glad to be a part and get the lights back on as quickly as we did. So thank you, sir.
Ron, thank you very much, absolutely. And I understand we've got a short video about the storm. Can we show the video now?
Tell us how many different people came from different locations to, to contribute to the, I'm just curious, because I know we had a lot from other locations.
We had a lot, at least, let's say in the state of Georgia, we had over 8,000 people to come in around the state, about 1,600 here in really central Georgia, and we had people come as far as Canada to repair power back in this state.
Wow. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Preparation for Hurricane Irma has been a massive effort by dozens of organizations with hundreds of people, helping both local citizens and those who had to evacuate from Florida and South Georgia. For more than eight days, crews worked around the clock to shelter those who needed it, get ready for the storm, weather the storm, and as we're still doing, recover from it. From September 11th to September 13th, 70 Bibb County deputies worked 665 overtime hours, many of them going to work in the midst of 50 mile-per-hour winds. The Red Cross of central Midwest Georgia served more than 1,500 people over eight days in five shelters, and they had more than 250 volunteers. The Salvation Army of central Georgia prepared 8,270 meals with 23 volunteers and 17 employees. Our emergency animal shelter had 35 dogs, 12 cats, three rabbits, 25 volunteers, and 11 animal welfare employees. Georgia Power has restored service to more than 55,000 homes. 254 traffic signals and intersections are repaired. More than 600 trees and counting are cleared from our streets, and there have been thousands upon thousands of working hours from women and men who care about our community and its people.
Sandra Yates, Macon-Bibb County Public Works.
Especially Kerry Hatcher, Georgia State Defense Force.
Emma Gonzalez-Stembridge, Aries.
Kevin Barkley, sideways director of Macon-Bibb County.
Miranda Gowan, administrative officer from Macon-Bibb County Emergency Management Agency.
Robert Walker, Macon-Bibb County Rain Department.
Kevin Green, Aries member.
Sergeant Moles, Macon-Bibb County Fire Department.
Sergeant Cautionahan, Macon-Bibb Fire Department.
Marvin Land, Director of Public Water.
Art Hanner, EMA volunteer, IT Department.
These are just a portion of the hundreds of people who work together to shelter, feed, help, recover, and repair. Thank you to everyone still helping Macon-Bibb County move forward together.
So thank you to all of our partners. We really do appreciate all that you have done and all that you continue to do for us. We really do appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from Loveland Technologies about the community blight mapping, and Jerry, if you would come up and introduce yourself, that would be just great.
Now Teresa Robinson and Tony Rojas, they, I just want them to take a bow, but they're on the way out now, so that's good.
Okay, come, and all, all the water thought it worked. Tony Rojas, thank you, didn't mean to overlook you. We appreciate everything that all of our partners did for us.
All right, good evening, everyone. Can I just say, this is a pretty incredible city-county meeting. I don't know if they're all like this, but for a newcomer, I think in the last 30 minutes there was a celebration of life, there was rock and roll, there was a car chase, I think, hurricane heroes, and then like a sacred tree got turned into pins. That's like a lot of, lot of stuff, so I'll be, I'll be short and sweet to follow up. I'm here tonight to talk about a survey of about 32,000 properties in the urban redevelopment zone of central Macon-Bibb County. There's a website, if you want to write this down or punch it into your phone, it's called maconbibsurvey.com, and what happened over the summer is we hired about 25 local people to go
So thank you to all of our partners. We really do appreciate all that you have done and all that you continue to do for us. We really do appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from Loveland Technologies about the community blight mapping. And Jerry, if you would come up and introduce yourself, that would be just great.
Now Teresa Robinson and Tony Rojas, they, I just want them to take a bow, but they're on the way out now, so that's good.
Okay, come on in. And all, all the water thought it worked. Tony Rojas, thank you. Didn't mean to overlook you. We appreciate everything that all of our partners did for us.
All right, good evening, everyone. Can I just say, this is a pretty incredible city-county meeting. I don't know if they're all like this, but like, for a newcomer, I think in the last 30 minutes, there was a celebration of life, there was rock and roll, there was a car chase, I think. Hurricane heroes, and then like a sacred tree got turned into pins. That's like a lot of, lot of stuff. So I'll be, I'll be short and sweet to follow up. I'm here tonight to talk about a survey of about 32,000 properties in the urban redevelopment zone of central Macon-Bibb County. There's a website, if you want to write this down or punch it into your phone, it's called And what happened over the summer is we hired about 25 local people to go out and visit these 32,000 properties with a smartphone app, so they could see a map of the area, they could see all the individual parcels of land, they could touch the parcels, and then take a photograph, and then enter in what they were looking at. So they would first answer, is it a structure or a lot? And then if it's a structure, what is the use of it? Is it a commercial building? Is it a house? And then, is it occupied? And if not, are there any indicators of blight? Open to trespass, dumping, fire damage, things of that nature. And the website, I think, is really interesting for a few different reasons. One, it makes the results of that survey available at, down to the parcel level. So if you, if you head to the site, you'll see a map that lists, first off, the number of unoccupied properties that were found in the area. There were about 37 unoccupied structures, 3,700 unoccupied structures that were found. If you zoom into the map, you can see them color-coded by their observed condition. So the surveyors used a range from good to fair to poor to suggest demolition condition. And I do want to say as a caveat, being a human myself, these, these were humans that did the, the observation. They did so from the sidewalk, so they did not enter into any properties. So their assessment is a, a, a good human assessment, but may not accurately reflect the interior of the home, so there are certain limitations. But as a guide for what is vacant and what is a distressed property, it is, it is an excellent tool. And all the information is current from, within the last two months. So if you drill into the map and click on a parcel, you're able to see the photography that was taken. And so, this is a great tool for groups in the city that are working on getting on top of blight, quantifying how much blight there is, creating budgets for what do we need to do to go out, get the money, get the resources needed to take these properties down, and also sorting which properties are the worst of the worst. So you can actually use this map to do really fine-grained searches. Like if I want to see every property that is vacant, open to trespass, and has fire damage, I can do that, and it'll highlight just those properties in, in the area. So it's a tool for different departments and neighborhood groups, very, very powerful. On the website, you'll also see some high-level findings. So just pie charts of how many properties were visited and what were found to be in different categories. So of the, of the 20, of the 32,000 properties we visited, unfortunately, just about one in five structures was found to be occupied or possibly occupied, which means that a surveyor couldn't really tell there were signs of, of occupancy, but maybe the property was on the edge, or there were at least a lot of deferred maintenance on, on the, on the household. The, the site breaks down how the different unoccupied structures are used, you know, how many were commercial buildings, or schools, or churches, or buildings of that nature, what conditions they're in, structures versus lots, and what kind of lots need maintenance as well. So you can explore this information. Again, it's maconbibsurvey.com. For those that want to engage in keeping the information current or updated, there's an email address on the site. You can email Cass Hatcher, who will get your name, see where you are in the city. We can give you access so that you can use your smartphone to go out and look at properties in your area, and make sure the information is correct and keep it updated. And all of the data is open data that can be made available to city-county departments. So any department that's already involved in touching properties, working on the blight problem, they can take this data and put it into their own systems, so they don't need to change anything. And we're also making these tools available for those departments to use. So if there, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to take questions, I'll take them. If not, I won't. Thank you very much for your time. And again, it's maconbibsurvey.com, has a lot of very interesting information that we hope is helpful for getting on top of the blight challenge.
Jerry, that's absolutely fantastic. Thank you for a wonderful presentation, and thank you for what I think is going to be a very valuable tool as we continue to address the issue of blight in our community. Mr. Watkins, this was actually, I think, your initiative. Anything you'd like to add at this point, sir?
Not too much, just to say, it's a big thank you to Jerry and Loveland Technologies for putting this together for us. And, you know, this is still just the beginning of collecting data. We, we as the policymakers need to decide how we're gonna implement and really address this problem. But we've got good, clean data on exactly where and what our problem is. Now we need to be proactive while this data is still fresh and come up with some viable solutions.
And if I may quickly, I would be remiss not, if I did not thank Commissioner Watkins and a whole bunch of people in this room and elsewhere. This was, I have to say, working, we're coming in from Detroit, Michigan, and we do work around the country, and working in Macon-Bibb was more of like a family-feeling affair than it typically is, which was really cool. From, from being put up in housing to, to house where the surveyors came in every day and came back at the end of the day, to the artwork that's even on the website, which was an artist who paints and illustrates buildings in the city. A lot of things came together, and so I just want to say thank you to the people who were in the room and not in the room who helped to make this come together.
Jerry, thank you very much. We appreciate it, and we know we'll see you again. No other invited guests with us tonight, but, and there are no public comments on agenda items per se. There were a couple of people that have comments that they want to make to us on non-agenda items, and we'll take those up a little bit later in the, in the meeting. This is going to be a very quick committee report. Because of the storm, we did not have any of our committee meetings, as we have them typically scheduled on the second and fourth Tuesdays. So this second Tuesday, the 11th of September, 9/11, another day of disaster in the country, we did not have the Operations and Finance Committee meeting, so no report there. We did not have Economic and Community Development, no report there. Did not have Public Safety Committee meeting, no report there. Did not have Facilities and Engineering, so no report there. So that brings us to the consent agenda. You'll be glad to know that there are no items on the consent agenda for action tonight. So that brings us now then to old, old business. And the first item of old business is a resolution for the appointment of a county voting delegate for the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to appoint Commissioner Gary Becthorpe to serve as the ACCG 2017 Legislative Leadership Conference Voting Delegate and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item B is a resolution to lease space in our Department of Family and Children's Services to the Houston County WIC program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement of extension with the Houston County Board of Health WIC program for the lease of office space located at 456 Oglethorpe Street for the annual lease amount of $21,215 and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item C is a, a resolution to execute an independent contractor agreement for construction of a couple of new houses and, and lend more estates. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an independent contractor agreement with Macon Area Habitat for Humanity, Inc., in the amount of $201,532 from Home Investment Partnership Program funds for construction of single-family units on 4342 Worsham Avenue and 4352 Worsham Avenue, in substantially the same form as Exhibit A attached here too, and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to adopt a five-year, short-term work program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and adopting the Macon-Bibb County Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element update and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to accept a grant from the ACCG for health and wellness, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept health promotion and well-being grant from the ACCG Group Health Benefits Program in the amount of $15,000 and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an appointment to the Macon Pension and Retirement Systems, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission appointing Edmund Strozier to serve as a member of the Retirement Committee for the Macon Pension and Retirement Systems Division A Plan and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an appointment to the Macon-Bibb County Board of Tax Assessors, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving the reappointment of Johnny Gordon to the Macon-Bibb County Board of Tax Assessors and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a second appointment to the Macon Pension and Retirement System Division A Plan, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission appointing Charlotte Woody to serve as a member of the Retirement Committee for the Macon Pension and Retirement Systems Division A Plan and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve a settlement with, for the claim of Larry Dunning, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a general lease and settlement agreement related to Larry Dunning's separation from employment with Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a companion resolution approving the settlement of a claim by Lee Stringer, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a general lease and settlement agreement related to Earlville Lee Stringer's separation from employment with Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. And finally, a, a resolution to accept a grant from the Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank grant from the State Road and Tollway Authority in the amount of $1,500,000 for construction costs related to the Second Street Downtown Revitalization Project and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. There is no new business for us to read tonight, but I would urge you to check your, the agenda that's published on Friday. You can go online and find it, because I'm confident that other resolutions and ordinances will be coming down from the, the legal department, and we'll take those up next Tuesday. I believe next Tuesday is the 20, 26th? Next Tuesday, the 26th, that night beginning at 9:00 a.m. in the conference room that's behind us. That brings us to public comments on non-agenda items, and there were a couple of people that signed up that wanted to make comments on non-agenda items. One is Lovea Kohli. Is Ms. Kohli still here? The other is Louis Hargrove. That's Louis Hargrove. Louis Hargrove, thank you very much for your patience and for, for being here with us tonight. You were recognized for five minutes, sir. And adjust that microphone when you get down there so we can hear you, please, sir.
All right, ma'am.
Thank you.
County Commission, Youth Commission. Yeah, ma'am. Every time I come out here, I say, let's have a moment of silence for the people that got murdered. We're finna last month here in Macon-Bibb County, please. Thank you. Ma'am, I don't know what we're gonna do about all this violence that we having. It's not just in Macon-Bibb County, it's all over. But something came to my mind while I was sitting up there concerning this Youth Commission. Maybe they should have a discussion, time hall meeting with the people from the community right here in government center. Just try to find out what's going on out in the community, maybe from 12 to 25. Let them ask people questions. What's going on? How can we help as you? That's what we need if y'all ain't already doing it. That's what y'all need to have, time hall meeting among all the young people. A lot of people out there dying. And, and really, you know, essentially, it just don't make no sense the way people out there killing up each other. And actually, it really hurt me to think about it, although they did a good job on this cleanup. But we still got a lot of negative stuff going on in our community. And I always say, stop the violence, stop the violence, stop the violence. Talking it. That's all I can do myself. And we have a few more people doing the same thing. Rabbi, he be out there pretty regular. The shahs be out there pretty regular. Where the rest of these preachers are? We got a church on every corner. Where that rabbi? Get him out. Go in the community and talk to people. See, it's got to be some kind of solution to stop that people talking about property, jobs. That don't make you pull a crickle from a gun. Too many guns out there, all but you got guns, just about every one of them. All this robbing and stuff going on, and they kill you, you say anything to them. I don't know, some got to give. Some got to give. And another issue I want to say something about, ma'am. I used to try to watch all the commission meetings on daily, 6:00 in the morning, 10:00 in the evening. I've been watching the commissioner meeting, the commissioner, me from August the 1st, here this September 19th. I wonder what them people come from Florida, come up here and catch up with committee me, commissioner me, and see that over and over, same thing. Never, it never progressed. Why is that? Who in charge of that? And I've been complaining about that just about a year. Y'all should be complaining about it, because what y'all doing down here is not getting to the public. Not getting to the public. Somebody to blame. I don't talk to the flood about it, I don't talk to them guys back there about it. Nothing happened. Tried to get a appointment, see you, ma'am, but never did get it. Tell you about it. I don't talk to a few of y'all up there about this situation. And people need to know what's going on. A lot of older peoples in walkers' wheelchairs try to watch these committee meetings, but they can't, because you're not showing that you're not progressive. If you back there August the 1st, here this 19th of September, y'all do a little bit of that. Fools are letting people know what going on, but can't come down here, which probably won't come no way. But at least give them the opportunity to know what's going on. We're in the community. And I'm gonna thank version, version again, which are y'all, but what you trying to do? Proactive. Continue to do a version, ma'am, all of you. But we got to do something in our community about this violence. It ain't causing no jobs, property. It ain't causing, it's yours out there, if they want to work. But see what gonna happen, ma'am. When you kill somebody, you going to prison, and they in the ground. And who you hurting? Two families suffer because some angry person out there shooting in there and killing them. Just don't make no sense. Ma'am, talk to somebody, try to get them to go out in the community and talk. And use the resource you got with our Youth Commission. Time hall meeting, young people. A duck sitting in the back, watch. Try to know where you are. And y'all continue to do what you doing. You're doing a good job. And when you get old enough, think about a career in politi, in politics. If you can get to be Secretary of State, do you know what kind of money that pay? With undergrad, degree. Maybe high school, you know, we had a mayor one time, I mean, a governor, they going on for an eighth grade. But he had a budget, so many million.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrove.
We got to vote.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hargrove. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hogrow. Your time has expired, but we appreciate you being here with us and appreciate your comments. One more call for Lovea Colley. I hope I'm pronouncing that name close enough to write Lovea Colley. Apparently, she, she left. Nope, nobody else. Any points of personal privilege? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.